Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, welcome to the common council meeting, city of Platteville. It is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth. It's six P M. We're in the council chambers. Uh, and I am calling to order the regular meeting of the council. We'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Yeah.
Lynn Parrot?
Yeah.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome the many in our audience tonight. Thank you for coming and uh, thank you for hosting a very nice open house. Earlier. Uh, with good cookies and other good goodies. It was nice to see so many people. Uh, downstairs. And uh, so our seniors and also we have a student in them in our midst tonight who's uh. Looking uh, to uh, fulfill a requirement for a class. Uh, where he has to attend a public meeting, so he has chosen this meeting, so we welcome him. And I think we have a couple of other folks here who will be making presentations later. So we will start with the senior center. Uh, presentation. Uh, I guess Sam, you're on. And yeah.
Evening. I'm Sam Stasko. I live here in Platteville. And on behalf of the senior center and pass, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and present to you guys tonight. Um, I hope you've all had a chance to check out our senior center. It's pretty awesome and we're all very happy with how it turned out. So let's start with. Who we are. Um, some of us are volunteer members of the commission on aging, others are part of pass. And then we have uh, Ally and Jill and the seniors. Um. Well, many people don't know what passes. Pass stands for Platteville area senior support. With the exception of Ally and Jill. We are all volunteers and are committed to looking out for our seniors. So what are the basic human needs? When we think of our needs, we often think of only the physiological things such as food, water, air, shelter, sleep. But um, Maslow's hierarchy of needs breaks it down a little bit different than the conventional way that we're used to thinking. You know, you have your physiological needs, which air, water, sleep, food. Um, safety needs, personal security, resources and health. And then you have love and belonging, so friendship, family, sense of connection. Esteem, respect, self-esteem, recognition, strength. Self-actualization, the desire to become the most that one can be. To thrive and be happy, we all need a sense of love and belonging, whether that is home or in a community. It may look different for everyone. At the senior center, you belong here. Everyone is welcome here. Jill and Ally do a great job running the center. They truly care and keep an eye on our seniors. If someone seems to be struggling. With any of the needs I just spoke of, they may reach out to their family or look into appropriate services to get them the help that they need. According to William James, the founder of the American psychology, the deepest principle of human nature is the craving to be appreciated. We appreciate our senior population. I appreciate them. They may come from different backgrounds, but they helped build this community and country. They have served us well, and now we need to serve and support them. So what does a community offer senior citizens? Well. My sister Sarah, she's forty-seven years old, and she recently went to a restaurant and was, without asking, given a senior citizen discount. She was upset, as you can imagine, because she's only forty-seven. Um, but I would have been more upset that it was only fifty cents. Because most seniors that we know are on fixed income, so. You know, going out to eat or getting anything important, it, they don't have the money for it. So the point I want to make is how do most communities support our senior citizens? And it's exactly that. They give them a discount on food. Um, like we let them into the football games for free. Um, but it's very minimal stuff that they can take advantage of. So how is Platteville different? Platteville has had a senior center um, since the early nineteen seventies, which is actually pretty amazing that it's been around that long. Fifty years. Um, we are very fortunate to be able to have a senior center for anyone over fifty years of age living in a Platteville or the surrounding areas. Through the center, they have yoga, cards, coffee, crafts, bingo, lunch and lectures and much more. Most importantly, they have listening ears and Ally and Jill. Many feel and have voiced that Jill and or Ally should have a forty-hour a week position. The seniors feel someone should be full-time. They are passionate about the work they do. Other than organizations, they keep an eye on our seniors and how they are doing. So do any of you utilize the senior center? I guess you're probably too young, so am I, but we'll all get there eventually. So the senior center offers more than just a vital connection. Senior centers offer innovative engagement activities, including mental health, resources and education. Fitness and recreational activities that combat social isolation and loneliness. According to the municipality magazine, by twenty forty, Wisconsin Knights aged sixty-five plus are expected to increase to twenty-three point seven percent. Of the state's population. Making senior centers especially valuable to a community. We are here to help seniors age with dignity, providing education, socialization and wellness. Seniors can learn new things, feel valuable by giving back through volunteering in the community and making connections to help combat isolation and loneliness. According to the magazine, one of the most important aspects of the senior. Center. Is to help seniors feel a sense of connection. Many people come to us after the loss of a spouse or significant other, reaching out because they want to connect with someone. Nearly twenty-five percent of adults aged sixty-five or older are considered socially isolated. A condition that increases a person's risk of premature death, equivalent to that of smoking or obesity. Social isolation. Can't say that word. Isolization. So so, ah, social isolation is also associated with fifty percent increased risk of dementia. Twenty-nine percent increased risk of heart disease and thirty-two percent increased risk of stroke. Of the seniors that attend the senior center, we estimate that seventy-five percent have lost a spouse. So how did we get here? As most of you know, or all of you know, the center was recently moved to this building from OE Gray. City Hall was chosen as the new location for the senior center because it was believed that it could be transformed into a safe and comfortable and welcoming space for seniors to gather. When choosing a location, we needed to look into somewhere that the city owned, but wasn't using. With the help of the building manager, Butson, who did so much of the renovation work, the old police department was the perfect place. Our location. Is handicap accessible, has a hearing loop, and we continue to make adjustments to meet the needs of our seniors. We love our new location. The seniors love their new location, and we love that this is now our permanent home. I know when it was first discussed that the senior center was going to have to move, a lot of people were leery or upset. Um. They wondered who was going to pay for it, what are the taxpayers going to pay for it, or how this was ever even going to work? Um, a lot of people worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make this happen. The project was funded by the money that was received with the sale of the old senior center. And from a large financial gift from an anonymous donor. We are so grateful for this gift and what it has allowed us to build here. The seniors are over the moon with this new location. It has great lighting, space and other amenities. That make this location more convenient. We have had a lot of our seniors from the old building here, but we have been welcoming new faces. The senior center designated parking spaces have also been so handy for seniors to be able to park close to the doors and around the area. So how did we pay for it? Well, we didn't use taxpayer money. We uh, forty-eight, forty-eight thousand came from selling our old building. And the rest came from an anonymous donor who gave us sixty thousand dollars. Which is pretty amazing. So what does pass do? Uh, we fundraised to support the senior center. We have several brought sales a year. This year, we sold walking tacos on Second Street at night, and we will be doing this again on October seventh for the UW homecoming. We donate the profits from the day trips and the craft fair that we have every year. Uh, previously, we also sold the city's historic calendars. Every year, we host a craft fair with all proceeds going to the senior center. And then um, someone local makes canned beef, and when it's sold, it raises the money for the center. So what is the money used for? I'm not there yet. Past fundraisers to pay, fundraises to pay for senior center utility offset entertainment, programming and additional needs. Uh, before we moved to this location, we were housed under the same roof as the A D R, A R D C. Studies have shown that group meals have helped reduce social, social isolation and loneliness. And our old location, I just said that. Um, so sadly, a lot of the seniors are missing out since they broke apart into two different locations. It's just not as convenient for some of them to make it to the armory. It's not as accessible. Um, Jill and Ally are educating people that the A D R C and the senior center are separate. And some seniors in the community used to come just for that meal. So Ally has reached out to A D R C to try to get the senior center as a designated congregant meal site. So what does the senior center offer? We continue to offer our weekly card games, including bridge, cribbage, hand and foot, Uger, and most recently tick. Our monthly free bingo continues to draw a great crowd. We have also added two-dollar bingo game and left, right, center, a dice game. The senior center also offers musical entertainment as well as educational and informative speakers to keep seniors aware of the happenings around them. A favorite activity of our seniors is the day trips. With work or transportation, and they look forward to many of those in the future. The annual senior picnic this year was a hit and more than two hundred seniors attended. So just to give you some testimonials from seniors that attend the sender. Um, I might go backward. One said, I like coming to the new location of the senior center because it is so nice and new, and I like the location. Always a place to park. I like to come as it gets me out of my apartment. I can spend a lot of time with my friends. There's always something going on here. We have card games, speakers, potlucks. Talks on health, you name it, we do it at the Platteville Senior Center. I don't know what I would do if I couldn't go there. It's such a friendly place and I always feel welcome and wish everyone would come and see what a great place we have here. Another said, I have been going to the senior center for chair yoga exercise all last year. It was wonderful balance, wonderful for balance and strength and getting to know people. This year, I started with exercise class with Eileen McCartney, and I use the chair to help with balance. It is a great class and a nice way of getting to know people. I've been coming to the senior center for about a year. It has been such a positive in my life. I enjoy all the activities and trips that are offered because of the positive attitude of our staff. It has carried over to all of us. I had two friends from Dubuque come to visit. They loved our facility and said we were so lucky to have so many varied activities. Ally and Jill would like to thank pass for fundraising and volunteering to help out when, where and when needing. I would personally like to thank Ally and Jill. For looking out for our seniors. It truly does take a village and we thank you for all your time and support.
Sam, you left a little early in case anybody has a question up here. Does anybody? Anybody with a question? Or a comment? Right, and uh, you're having uh, today, you had open house from four to six. And on Thursday morning this week, you have Good Morning Platteville at eight A M. So if you're not a afternoon person, you could be a morning person and come see the center. Yep. Stop in and check it out. Uh, Ray, if you need to speak, you would have to come to the podium.
As Sam said before, we're very thankful that we have a nice place to go. It's much better than an armory. And um. You've heard of some of the testimonials, but I think, I'm thinking of the future. What are we going to do when we do outgrow that? I mean, as people's age. You know, we're going to have more and more seniors come wanting to do something. And the only place to go would be the senior center in Platteville, and. When we have a guest speaker and some of the activities. That place is full. You get sixty people in there. Forty-five, fifty, you know, for a speaker, it's, it's a packed place. And if we continue to grow in the next four or five years. You know, I'm hoping that we could put some money aside or grants or something for the future. I don't see that as being the. Place that we're going to stay in the next twenty, thirty years. As I see that we're going to outgrow that.
Okay, so Ray, introduce yourself and.
Oh, Ray Banff.
And it's always good to plan ahead, so that's what you should be doing with your group.
Yeah. And for the city to look towards the seniors too. Helping the seniors. We're a big part of Platteville. What, you know, we talked about the percentages and I want this council to think about the seniors in the future that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That would take care of our presentation. Thank you all for coming. You are certainly more than welcome to stay. Uh, but if you uh, don't want to stay, then you're uh. You might want to leave at this point before we go on with the agenda. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may approve, be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature. Or previous discussion, let me know if you want something for separate discussion and action. We have the council minutes from uh, September twelfth. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have appointing to the tide. Um. Jeremy Payne and Jennifer Gitner Light. And to the Water and Sewer Commission, Joanne Wilson. Uh, licenses, we have a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages and wine for the Grand County Humane Society. On Saturday, October fourteenth. For their puppies and pints activity at the new location. Of the Humane Society at five hundred East U S Highway one fifty-one. There are one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell, sell alcohol in your uh, packet. Permits, there's a parade permit for the Platteville High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October thirteenth, starting at two. And two run-walk permits, one for the Platteville Community Arboretum for the Monster Dash, their annual five K fun run and walk on Saturday, October twenty-first. Which would be at nine A M. And suicide prevention is having a Veterans Day run and walk. Run in March, pardon me, on November eleventh, starting at eight A M. Finally, the resolution twenty-three dash twenty-nine declaring October as United Nations. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to be approve the consent agenda.
And we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Uh. I did note that the uh, the Veterans March requested that their fee be waived. Within their packet.
Did. Does that take separate action or was that? Part at Candace?
I don't have the application in front of me, but. I'm assuming that they probably asked for it to be waived. That would have been. In the packet.
There wasn't, there wasn't a special request.
In the letter.
From you. There might have been a letter. But then we would need to pull that.
You, you wouldn't have to, you could. If it's part of the letter, or excuse me, part of the application, you can just. Vote on it. Most of them are that way.
Most of them are the fee waived?
Correct.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, so that fee will be waived.
I think the Monster Dash had a letter also. Asking for a.
Yep, asking for a few waivers. So I, that must be. Probably the homecoming parade did too.
It's sort of the norm.
Okay. All right.
Comment, is there? I agree with the, the motion to adopt, but. Designating October twenty-twenty-three as United Nations Month, red.
You want that red? Okay, you would like that red before we vote. So designating October twenty-twenty-three as United Nation, Nations Month. Whereas the President of the United States and the Governor of Wisconsin officially proclaimed October twenty-fourth. As United Nations Day to commemorate the founding of the United Nations. Whereas in areas of education, emergency relief for children, refugee assistance, agriculture, health and economic development. The United Nations commendably carries on its humanitarian activities. Whereas the United Nations has created the Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs. To promote the preservation of human rights. Whereas in the post-Cold War era, the United Nations has come closer to working as its founders envisioned. And now faces new challenges. Whereas because of the rapid and unsettling transition to a global community, the United Nations is developing. The following governance systems. The active promotions of preventive diplomacy. Peacemaking and peacekeeping. The foundation for the rule of world law. The protection of human rights and the placing of the suffering of people above national sovereignty. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Platteville hereby designate the month of October twenty-twenty-three as United Nations Month in the city of Platteville. And further be it resolved to symbolize its decision. The Common Council authorizes the flying of the United Nations flag above the city hall during the month of October twenty-twenty-three. Okay. We have a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda. Uh, we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, I hate, I hate it when this happens to my agenda. It seems to disappear off my computer. Citizens comments, observations and petitions, if any. We have nobody who has registered, but in the um. Do we have uh? Our police department who may want to issue an invitation.
Get out of the way.
Uh, so our annual community picnic for the Platteville Police Department is tomorrow from five to seven P M. At Valley View Park, which is over by the UW Platteville. Um, stadium by the new dorm around Tree Commons there, so feel free to attend. I believe nearly all of our officers will be there. Feel free to come meet them. We have a number of new faces over the last couple of years. Um, we'll have some picnic games and food available too.
So that's tomorrow night at Valley View Park, which is kind of across from um. The stadium. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to promote? Clint, do we have an upcoming Taste of Platteville? I think maybe before our next regular meeting.
For uh, yes, on October. Eight, on that Sunday, we're hitting Taste of Platteville at the Brodsky Center. Um, there should be flyers and such that are put out in the community. We can make sure that those also get sent your folks away with counsel. Certainly invite everybody to come take a taste, and I believe there's pickleball tournament also going on the same day. Uh, I'd like to see everybody on the pickle courts playing as well.
There a registration fee for that?
Pickles.
For pickleball, I'd have to double check with Papa on the registration for that and how that works, but in uh, for Taste of Platteville, we're selling tickets. It's all ticket and vendor booths. I think we have twelve uh, different vendors lined up.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, then let's go on to reports that are in your packet. Uh, the zoning board of appeals, Todd.
Yes. Uh, nothing to add.
Okay, Airport Commission, Bob.
Nothing to add.
Question.
Okay.
A question on um, seven thirty-one twenty-three. Minutes. And so looking at that, uh, page one. It talks about under number seven, possible action. On item discussed in closed session. And it says um. Motion by the Lucky to authorize the chair or his designated representative to visit the police department. About fuel loss to see whether further investigation warranted. Motion passed unanimously. Could somebody um? Please explain that as what is meant as far as fuel loss.
I can take that one. Uh, so. There uh, was concern that there may have been um, some fuel. That was missing. Um. That was uh, probably during twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two timeframe. Uh, and so this um, item was to um, authorize the chair. Uh, to. Further that. Um, investigation to see if in fact. Um, there was any. Uh, evidence. Circumstantial or otherwise that would warrant uh, an investigation. Um, to have the matter looked into.
How much are your estimate was lost?
I, I don't have that figure, I'm sorry.
How about a guess?
I don't have a guess.
So I'm assuming it's more than a gallon and, and it's less than ten thousand, or what are we talking about?
We're anticipating that uh, through the police department when the. Investigation has been closed out and maximized to where it's going to end, that their report would come back. Close session to be delivered to the airport commission at that time, it may be appropriate, but while it's still an ongoing topic, I would recommend that we don't. Get into too many of the details here in open session.
It would eventually come back to the council for an explanation.
It, yes, it'll come through the commission as well and, and to the council as requested.
Thank you.
Okay, Library Board, Lynn.
Uh, no additions.
And Museum Board, Bob. You're selling pasties right now?
No, I think November fourth.
Okay. All right, there is one action item on our agenda tonight. And that is the contract twelve dash twenty-three alleys and the Platteville Business Incubator Parking Lot. Howard.
Yes, thank you. Um, we combined two different projects. Uh, first was alley paving with a project budget of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, street division crews have already graded and gravelled the alley. Uh, north of and parallel to Furnace Street between uh, Second and Fourth Street. Um, this alley has never been paved in at least twenty-seven years. Every severe rainstorm, the alley needs to be regraded, deposits gravel. Uh, this would provide a paved alley with an expected life of about twenty years. If funding is available, we would also pave a portion of the alley running north from West Gridley, parallel and between Hickory and Chestnut Streets. Um, then the other part is Platteville Business Incubator, Inc. Parking Lot. Project had a budget of uh, uh, seventy-five thousand. Uh. The original sections of the parking lot have not been maintained since its inception. Uh, the intent is to do spot repairs and do a thin overlay of the front portion of the parking lot. Um. The uh, project costs for alley paving, including its share of general contract costs. Is uh, little over eighteen thousand dollars, which is uh, under the twenty thousand allocated budget. Project cost for P B I paving. Uh, including its general share. Is over ninety-three thousand dollars, uh, ninety-six with engineering costs. Um, the uh, Delta Three and P B I I have reviewed the project. Uh, they intend to eliminate most of the curb. Uh, for a cost reduction of over fourteen thousand dollars. And then uh, P B I I is recommending that uh, they. Provide funding. Of about forty-seven hundred dollars to pay for additional thin overlay required. Um, so. Um. We're recommending that. This uh, contract be awarded to G Pro Excavating with the adjustments. At the bid price of ninety-seven thousand, four fifty-two seventy. With forty-seven hundred dollars of that to come from P B I I funding. Uh. La, or. Today you have on your desk. A uh. A, a little uh, diagram here. One, on one side of the page, it says original design. It's the way that uh, Delta Three had originally designed the project. Uh, and then you flip it over and it shows the proposal. Um, we would eliminate all the curb that's in that double red line. And then that, what you see as approximately thirty-five tons. On the east side by the uh, um. By the loading docks, uh, that would be the extra part paid for by P B I I. Uh, if you have any specific questions, Dan Dressen's is here in the audience. Uh, if you, if you want any specifics on, on those, but uh. Uh, staff is recommending. Award of this contract.
I. Uh, where the, my question is, is there curb there currently?
Most places, no.
Where this curb is now in double red line, was that to be new curb? Or was that to be repaired curb, or is that just what?
Majority of the curb was going to be new curb. When we met with uh, the incubator Kate specifically. The intent was to hopefully do an overlay of the entire parking lot, the front and back, but after we did a budget check. We knew that we were not going to be able to afford that, so. Uh, we were hoping that the curb price and some of the paving prices become unfavorable to add curbs in the entrance to try to. Prevent people from cutting, that, cutting the corner more or less. Um, however, um, due to a recent loss of a, a local concrete contractor, plus some other factors. Um, we, there are just not enough curb contractor, concrete contractors in the area, so the curb price came in extremely high. And so therefore we're going to eliminate it. Um, I think the original bid was four hundred and thirty lineal feet of the original bid pack. Of the original bid package is four hundred and thirty feet. We are going to keep twenty feet in. Because, uh, there's a couple areas that are close to the building that do have curb, very minimal curb, but a couple of them are broke, so we just have to do some repair work. Which, uh, G Pro Excavating will be do- doing themselves.
Dan?
You've asked a question. Now I'm looking at this thing that's proposed, that the one to look at. So you're saying that, excuse me. That, uh, twenty feet of curb. It says intend to eliminate all but twenty feet of curb for cost production of that amount, so. What, what did, what do you say here?
All of this, all of this curb is gone. And I don't know where your twenty feet is.
Yeah, basically, if you look at the front of the building, on the right-hand side, there's a small curb island, there's a section that's broken. And on the left-hand side of the building, by the, by the corner of the building, there's another little small section of curb, and that's, there's a chunk there that's broken as well.
That's the only thing that's going to be left.
Correct.
Okay, my other question is, um. Up in the, on the part two. Above. And then do it, do a thin overlay of the front portion of the parking lot. So explanation, maybe it's being talked about front portion, that's under the proposed, you're talking?
Correct.
Can't turn the page over.
Well, I'm looking at propose.
No, I know, but this is the part, there's a whole big parking lot back here. So they've eliminated, they've eliminated doing any overlay on the north side of the building.
Yep, and because that's newer paving. It's not brand new paving by any means, but it is newer than the original that was done in the. Uh, right around two thousand, correct Howard? Late nineties, two thousand?
Late nineties, I think.
Yeah.
Was the original.
Yeah.
Okay, so the request is to award contract twelve twenty-three alleys and Platteville Business Incubator Parking Lot to G Pro Excavating. With adjustments at the bid price of ninety-seven thousand four fifty-two seventy with forty-seven hundred. Of that amount coming directly from P B I I.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I had a question, Bob.
That's good. We have a motion in a second and you can go ahead and have you ask your question, Lynn.
Okay. The, um, the businesses that are there right now, how long will this take? Or will they be impacted? Like what are they, how do they fluctuate around this happening? How long do you think this will?
This will take, the, to, to, to do the thin overlay will take approximately about a half a day. So they'll be able to park either on Means Drive or on the backside, so very minor inconvenience.
Yeah, I just know because it's daycare center.
Correct, yeah, yeah, okay. Yep, and we will be restriping the parking lot as part of this project as well, including the crosswalk for the daycare.
Oh.
All right, we have a motion in a second to award this contract as requested. Uh, by Todd and by Kathy, Candace will vote. Hillian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that's the only action item on our agenda tonight, so now we'll move on to our information items. And the first of those is the ordinance amending parking in the downtown. Sorry, I have to always smile Howard, because I think we have an ordinance to amend parking about every other meeting, but that's okay.
Seems like it, yes, I understand. Um, we have two areas that should be addressed. Uh, one is an on-street accessible parking stall. On South Bonson near the former senior center, just, uh, north of the post office. Um, there's been a request to remove that parking stall, accessible parking stall and open it up for general parking. Uh, and it would have the same restrictions as the other on-street parking stalls. Uh, we already have two accessible parking stalls in lot five there, uh. At Pine and Bonson behind the post office. Main Street has, program has checked the surrounding businesses and believe that those two stalls are sufficient for the demand in the area. Uh, we have a single parking stall on North Court Street next to Garvey that is not signed. With the no parking three A M to six A M. We think that it may have been included in general signage, but, uh, staff. Believes that a specific ordinance would be helpful in clarifying this, uh, and we would like to get it straightened out before winter. Uh, the past few years, um, people have, uh, noticed that it. Does not specifically have a sign and, and it has made life a little more difficult for our snowplow drivers, so we would. Uh, would like to do that, and, uh, Mr. Garvey would also agree. Uh, with, with that as well.
Okay, so our, our questions again, one request is to remove a accessible parking. Designation from a parking, uh. Space on, uh, Bonson Street in the area of the former senior center. Two senior centers ago.
Correct.
Right, and the other is to sign, uh, to restrict parking. No parking between three A M and six A M, uh, just, uh, west of Garvey's on Court Street. Any questions? Okay, then that'll be on our agenda for action at the next meeting. Uh, next audit services for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, Nicola.
Thank you. The city has engaged with auditing firm Johnson Block and Company for many years to perform various audits, uh, for the city finances. Most recently, the city engaged with Johnson Block to perform the audits for the years twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Due to the amount of direct and indirect federal funding expended by the city in the years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The city was also required to undergo what's called a single audit. Uh, which is to comply with Title II U S Code of Federal Regulations Part two hundred, known as the Uniform Guidance. And also with state single audit guidelines. Johnson Block is currently completing this audit for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Johnson Block was also engaged to assist the city in twenty twenty-one with the submission of and support for the Public Service Commission. Conventional water rate case, which was, uh, several month process to get through. Staff would like to engage with Johnson Block for the twenty twenty-three financial audit and single audit. With the current transition to a new utility billing specialist and a new city manager in twenty twenty-three. Along with the implementation of Gatsby Statement Number eighty-seven on leases, which was new for the twenty twenty-two audit. And Gatsby Statement Number ninety-six on subscription-based information technology arrangements, new for this upcoming twenty twenty-three audit. The timing and capacity for an R F P process and possibly for a new audit firm is not ideal. There's also a concern that due to a staffing shortage in the accounting industry. Combined with additional workloads from new accounting standards those just mentioned, and more federal revenues. Auditing firms may not be taking on new clients. Staff are planning to request proposals from interested audit firms during the twen- during twenty twenty-four. For completion of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six audits. The budget and fiscal impact of this request is that, uh, the fees are included in the engagement letter, that's part of the packet. And those are an estimate of the cost of providing audit services for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. They represent an increase of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty on the low end of the range that was provided. The estimate includes the annual work required for Gatsby eighty-seven. Which was performed in twenty twenty-two, but not included in the twenty-two estimate. So it's not quite apples to apples. Audit partner Brent Nelson explained to us that the increase also reflects. The significant staffing shortage in the accounting industry and the additional workloads mentioned above. Due to those factors, Johnson Block is not accepting new audit clients. So the recommendation from staff is to im- to approve engaging with Johnson Block. For auditing services for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, questions? Dan?
Okay, I have a question, um. As far as doing the audit. How many individuals of the staff dash employees? Actually speak to the audit. Committee members.
Ah, great question.
There are two, one is the controller and Nicola.
So I would say.
Beyond that, do any council members directly speak?
Yes.
With the audit people, and who were those council members being?
Council president, the city manager, myself. Sheila, who's our comptroller, and every single member of the finance team, and there, there can be additional members of. Uh, the overall city employees that may be asked questions related to a particular project or a particular. Um. Uh, a particular grant, uh, so it might include Joe, certainly would include Howard on many occasions, yes. More than he likes, probably. Uh, you know, it might include Chad if it's related to, um, you know, payroll or employment, um, issues or, yeah. So whoever they need to talk to, they talk to.
The reason I bring up the question, because it says later that, um. The individuals assigned with this responsibility, this is on, there's no page here. Responsibility.
Pages up on the top left of the letter.
Administration Director, which is you.
Yeah, there is actually a page number on the top left of the letter. If you want to reference that, that would help me navigate to where you are.
Page five, I got it.
Page five, thank you.
It's up on the upper left.
Okay.
So that gave me the idea that, um. Not too many people are going to talk to the, to the company.
Uh, n- no, they do actually, that, myself and Sheila, um, are assigned to the responsibility. Um. For the non-audit services, um, we are the designated individuals. Um, with the suitable skills, knowledge and experience. Um, at least in the eyes of, uh, the city and, uh, and Johnson Block, so, um, so. We, we bear that responsibility, but they do talk to many, many members of staff to get the information that they require.
Be one council member. Going with you at least.
Now they talk to the council member privately. So that they can ask whatever questions that they need to ask.
Only I, they talk to one council member, they talk to the president of the council.
They do.
And, and that's pretty consistent, because the first time I got called, I said, why? Am I being called? And they said, it is our practice to call the president or the chair or whatever. Of every council, and, and their questions are not about. Um, specific expenditures or expenditure categories. Their questions are of a more, um. I don't know, a more, uh, general, uh, nature. Questions of, do you suspect anyone on your staff is? Dishonest, do you suspect anyone on your staff is stealing from you? I mean, it's. It's all, have you, do you have any belief that, you know? It, it's questions of that nature, it's not. Anything. I would say financial.
I will give my comment, I used to serve with the controller. And so forth, with. I was not the council president, so I'm just curious as to why just the council president alone. Speaking to the audit team.
And it's just, it's not the team either.
It's just a normal practice.
It's a normal practice, I don't.
Well, then they change it from previous years.
That could have been.
I know it is.
Yeah, Eileen, Eileen indicated that, you know, the first time I got a call after I was council president, I said something to Eileen. As she had been the president before, and she said, oh yeah, I got that call every year. And actually.
But, but I'm just telling you, it's been changed.
Well, it could have been changed.
It has been changed.
All right.
That could have, it has been changed.
So, uh, this contract for audit services, this is an eleven thou- uh, at least an eleven thousand dollar increase. Is that correct? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, except that the, uh, part of the work that they did last year that was not in last year's estimate, which we're comparing to. Has been included this year, so it's not the entire eleven thousand, but it is, uh, an increase of, uh, you know, what I would say is a. Significant increase. And that's why I followed up with them and asked them about that specifically. Um, and I was quite surprised to learn that they are not taking new clients, because, because of the nature, I, I think. Frankly, if I may go a little bit off, uh. Off agenda, but just to say that, I think. Generally, in many industries, in, in, in local government and, and now auditors are experiencing. The, the significant increase in workload related to a lot of this additional federal funding that is happening. Um, it's affecting, you know, availability of contractors, we know about the supply chain. And it's also affecting, you know, apparently the accounting industry as well.
Wondering also what training, uh, the people have as far as in finance, like the controller. What is the controller? Received with training about her position. And all the other ones as well.
The question is what training does the controller receive for her position?
The other members as well.
The other members of city staff?
Yeah.
Well, um, that's a pretty big question for all members of city staff. I would, I would just say that, um, that, that. New incoming members of city staff are trained by, uh, the people that. Have familiarity with the, with the responsibilities of the positions that they have, sometimes that may require. Them going outside of the city for training, so going to, you know, a school or conference. Um, and sometimes it's cross-training between members of teams that have similar responsibilities.
Does this happen?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, the contract for audit services for twenty twenty-three will be on our agenda next time. And then, uh, we can expect in twenty twenty-four, uh, that there will be an R F P. And we will go out and seek, uh, yeah, um. Other or all audit firms, uh, Nicola, it is not surprising to me, I work with another group. And we've been searching for an audit firm, and every time we call, the answer is the same. I'm sorry, we're not seeking new clients. So it's very difficult right now, so. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is the Carlson Detman Compensation Study.
Madam President, uh, Carlson Detman Consulting, who is a division of, uh, Cottin and Butler, uh, this evening we have Mr. Matt. Chef, chef Nick, chef, chef. Chef kid. Okay. I feel bad, I, I murdered your last name, Matt, you can correct me when you take and assume the mic. Um, Cottin and Butler, uh, Carlson Detman, the division here this evening, is the original. Uh, consultant that was brought on to put in place the compensation policy that we have, uh, right now. Over the course of the last six to eight months, I believe, uh, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, we. Pushed out some, uh, revisions that we wanted to have looked at through a J D Q process, a job, um. Questionnaire, which I'm sure Matt will bring us up to speed on, in trying to gauge where we at, uh, where we're at with the market, so. Uh, tonight, Matt is here to share with us kind of the process that Carlson Detman brought forward to Platteville. And kind of give us, uh, indications on some of the preliminary findings. Thank you, thanks Clint, appreciate it. Can you guys hear me okay? I know this was given some feedback before, I thought everybody was here to hear me the earlier, so I guess I'm disappointing. Or disappointed. Uh, I'm Matt Chefshick, I'm the Assistant Vice President for Carlson Detman Consulting. Um, thank you, uh, Chad and Nicola for the work that, uh, uh. We've been able to, to support us and, and we're very happy to be able to support the city, uh, through this work. Just have a quick presentation to highlight some of, uh, what we did, uh, what we found and, uh, high-level recommendations, uh, for the city to consider. Moving forward with, uh, uh, compensation. Um. As we think about what we did, uh, this is a, a highlight of an overview of our, our work, we're trying to gain consensus through the, the process. Uh, as, uh, Clint said, we did have some back and forth as far as ensuring we had strong and solid, uh, job documentation. Uh, we went out and did our, uh, market analysis and then bringing those things together. We went out and did our market analysis and then bringing those things together to provide a final report for the city. As we think about our approach, our focus of this study was really on compensation. When I say compensation, I mean base salaries. Not any benefits or retirement or other pieces that might go into that. Those are other pillars of total rewards, but our work is focused on the, the pay salary compensation front, not, as some may define it, total compensation as it relates to benefit costs and such. Um, when we think about this work, we think about in three big pieces. One is ensuring you have a strong internal hierarchy and internal job worth. That's one piece of this. The other piece of it is understanding what the external market is, what other, other people paying for, or other organizations paying for this work, and then bringing that together to define or develop pay grades and ranges to manage compensation within. And those are the big steps through this. Additionally, we want to make sure we define your market appropriately. You set a market target that you can be competitive within the market. And then it's more about paid delivery and how are we all going to pay for this and how might we implement this as we work through the decisions of this project and this work. When we talk about internal equity, it is that job order hierarchy. When we think about that, we're trying to have a consistent approach to view your jobs. And we use a job evaluation system, a point factor job evaluation system, where we break apart the jobs and look at those roles in five main factors. Education and experience, decision-making and impact, problem-solving and thinking challenges, communication, as well as work environment. So that helps to define or develop an internal hierarchy. Then, as I said, the second part of this work is more about the external market. What are others paying? What do we have to keep up with in the market? And when we think about that, we used to think really solely about the comparable marketplace. Who looks exactly like us? And we define that by the types of cities, populations, other services and things. But one of the things that we've been talking with organizations about is the competitive market. Your employees may or may not care if they're working for the city or some other organization in the local area. And so we talk about the competitive market as being a little bit more homogeneous. And where are we pulling talent for certain jobs now? Not every job that you have might have a private sector comparison, right? But we do incorporate some of that information and data into our study. So a big part of our work is focused on comparable cities. We've got a list of those peer comparables on the left-hand side of this slide, really looking at organization, cities that look and feel the best as we can towards Platteville. This is the same peer group that we used in the original study when we implemented your work a few years ago. We try and keep that recipe card the same so we can recognize differences in, in market movement and trends. Additionally, we use privately published compensation surveys. The surveys are listed on the right side of that slide. And here we're looking at both public sector and private sector employers in those published compensation surveys that we end up buying and utilizing our work. One thing I would say is that we want to make sure we're looking at your benchmark jobs, those jobs that are very similar to other organizations out there in the market. We want to make sure they're reflective of the marketplace and where you're pulling talent from. We also recognize that not every one of those organizations that I had on the list will have an exact job match to yours. So not every one of those has a, a similar benchmark to you. And if we found any outliers, higher, low, we were, those were removed. So we're looking at central, central tendencies in the data to make sure that we understand what the market is doing. These, this is the list of benchmark jobs that we incorporated in our study for this year. You can see, we want to make sure that we have full coverage of the city from lower wage jobs to higher wage jobs across multiple departments in the city as we think about building out a pay structure for you. And so what did we find? As we think about market competitiveness, we find that Platteville is lagging the market. What this graph is highlighting is it's taking your jobs and breaking up your jobs into thirds. The lowest third of your organization or the third lowest, the lowest paid jobs, the middle paid jobs and the highest paid jobs. And what we're seeing is Platteville lagging the market anywhere from 10% to 17% on average in comparison to that other set of data, that set of data. When we focus on the 50th percentile of the market, the middle of the market, the going rate, that central value that we see other organizations in that group paying. What we did was we built out a pay structure for you to utilize to manage compensation moving forward. That pay structure is a meet-the-market view of the world. So we're trying to straddle those that might pay lower and those that might pay higher to, to help anchor the middle of the pay structure for Platteville. We've got one pay structure that incorporates both non-exempt and exempt level jobs, so hourly and salaried roles, running from pay grade three to pay grade 17. We've also recommend a step-based pay structure where we have six or so steps to the, the going rate or the control point, and then six or so steps that can go above that level. Anywhere from 87 and a half percent of the going rate up towards about 112% of the going market rate as we think about anchoring that pay structure to the middle of the market. What we find is that, and when we do this work, especially for an organization that hasn't done this in a little bit, that there's an investment to make sure that employees are paid within that pay structure and employees are recognized and, and moving through that pay structure. A couple of things that we want the city to consider as far as investment might go to move employees into the pay structure. One, we want to make sure employees are moved to the minimum of that pay structure if you're adopting a pay structure. Generally, with a step-based structure, we want to make sure that employees are landing on one of the steps that were designed. And so probably the minimal cost that we would recommend is that $195,000 or approximately 5% of payroll as we saw it at the time. Additionally, some people, as they might move to a step, might get a very small increase, a half a percent or a percent. So one way that we talk about implementation schemes is to think about, everybody gets at least X amount of an increase and then on to the next step that fits. And so that option that's highlighted would be a recommendation that everyone gets 3%, at least a 3% increase and on to the step, the next step that, that fits. The cost of that is more like $283,000 and 7% of, of payroll. If we were to do that, we would see a distribution of your employees on the right, and that's the exhibit where we see where your employees are landing within the, the pay structure. The other two options are there for consideration, more like a 5% guaranteed increase and moving on to the next step. That costs a little bit more. The other thing would be to evaluate individuals' time within their job or time with the city and try and relieve some compression for longer-tenured employees. A model or an example of that is at the bottom where we might push people into the pay structure based on how long they've been with the organization. That costs a bit more at around $500,000 or 12% of payroll. One thing I would say with all this is you do not have to make all this investment at one point, but you should put in a play, a plan in place to move towards a more competitive position in the market. We recognize you're balancing many different decisions. One, is this structure fair and equitable and competitive? And two, can we pay for it? Is it, are we being fiscally responsible making these investments? And is this program sustainable? So it is a balancing act that all organizations that we work with face. We're seeing cities and counties and other municipalities deal with these competitiveness issues. We're also seeing them make, make adjustments and make plans to, to be more competitive in the, in the current environment for talent. So. That's all I have. I want to again thank Nicola and Chad for their work in this project. And we really appreciate you all having us do this. Can I answer any questions for the council?
I've got a series of them, I guess. We're sitting here at a point, and within your training and experience and what you've seen, how did we get here? I mean, we can fix this problem today. What and where are the managers at when they allowed this wage compression? And why has this been allowed to go on for so long? It would have been nicer to have this situation not occur. And is there some sort of discussion that needs to be happening with managers? What has to happen for the future? Because we can fix all this right now, and that's fine. But you're going to come back here in four or five years and tell me we have wage compression because some managers aren't taking care of their positions or their people, or something else is going on. So I, I want to know about the past and I want to know about the future. And what we're putting in place, make sure that we don't have this situation occur again. Because I think this has been going on since time began in, in, in government. The wage compression thing and certain people getting raises and others not. And I think we need to get this together because nobody wants to see their taxes go up by a great deal because a certain amount of responsibility wasn't being taken over the years. It's a responsibility of leadership to their people and paying them properly.
So, so Matt, Carlson Detman did a study for us and we had similar, do you have the date of that study?
I think the original study would have been in 17, maybe?
16, 2016. So Todd, we did try to address this beginning in 2016 with a similar study where we had a plan and put people along. I think.
That fell apart then by 2023, I'm assuming.
Well, I can maybe speak to some of these points if, if that's all right, Madam President. So the first point that we make is that, yes, we put a study together historically in looking at some data that was presented to me as we build the budget, a slide that you saw last year, I believe, with the pre-budget presentation of which I will bring back to you folks again is it's, there's a good layout that was put in place on showing how CPI and the Cost of Living Index has increased over the history of several years and how the city has responded to that. When it had come to compensations, there was multiple years in which 1% or a 0% was initiated for the sake of financial constraints and operating underneath net new construction limits and all those types of decisions that were made. So that's, you know, that's kind of one of the main drivers is inflationary costs were going up and we kind of stagnated some types of wages for purposes that were made in the best, what was seen in the best decisions at those times. The other part of it was in regards to directors, I would certainly not put the directors underneath the bus on not lobbying for their folks for compensations. I think that in the last few weeks, they've all done a fine job of trying to stiff-arm some dollars out of this guy. It really has come down to recommendations from a city manager underneath, trying to meet the many expectations. And this is probably, you know, it's not an isolated event of the city of Platteville and trying to manage these constraints and falling behind market. But again, it's something we're going to try to remedy, but remedy it incrementally. And then it also is going to require a long-term kind of commitment to make those adjustments with cost of living increases. And if, Matt, if I missed anything from your perspective on how we compare to other municipalities or counties or folks that you've helped in, to help us kind of feel like we're maybe not the only one out there, that would be much appreciated too.
Yeah, no, I think you're, uh, highlight some of the history there. That's very accurate and appropriate. I think the, the struggle for cities and counties has always been there to make sure they're funding wages appropriately. Yet recently coming through the Great Resignation, wages have really moved in a hyperactive pace. And so whether it's a private industry or a public sector employer, we're seeing wages shoot up all over in all types of jobs. And so in 2022 and 2023, this is a reality that wages are moving significant amounts. We're finally seeing the public sector catch up a little bit or do more than the private sector. We conduct a, a survey annually of what are others doing to, for wage increases? And this year was the first time in my history that I remember the public sector data coming back higher, where they're going to plan to give more than the private sector data was for, for next year. And so I think it's a culmination of everything that Clint had said and, and some of the recent wage growth as well.
Todd and, and Bob, you're, you're new here, but we've been under the same shared revenue for 20 years, not getting increases. We've been under these constraints. And it did come down, I mean, in many cases, it came down to, what do we do? How, how do we, how do we do anything when we have no money to do anything? So that was one thing. Matt, do you do mostly Wisconsin or do you do?
Where, yeah.
Yeah.
Much of Wisconsin, some Iowa, a little bit of Minnesota. Yeah.
And are you based in Dubuque or are you based somewhere else?
Great question. I'm based in Madison. Yeah.
How many of these studies are you doing right now for cities and/or counties?
Our practice covers both private sector and public sector employers. We are currently engaged in at least 30 of these. I recently completed one for Iowa County. We're currently doing one for city and county of Dubuque. So kind of bookended by activities around the city of Platteville. Yeah.
I have a question. As far as, excuse me, the people that will work on what you're saying here, who do you envision among this people in Platteville, staff, employees working on this particular topic? A city manager is going to present us with something here, so is the city manager going to select a certain number of people to work on this topic as far as wages?
Well, I think that'd be up to how you operate as a city, but generally the HR leadership and finance leadership would take the lead on these types of pay decisions.
So it, to try to maybe better explain, so the process on how we arrive at the information that's presented to Carlson Detman in which they put into their formula mixes through a job, DJDQ job description questionnaire.
Yeah.
And so it is a lengthy, more than 12 kind of page document, which tries to parcel out the different expectations of the positions, of the qualifications being required, the frequency in which some of those things are exercised in trying to put the whole package and the framework of the position together. And that's arrived at through management and working with the position, often with the individuals as well to understand, engage how often they're using those skill sets. Those are collected then and reviewed through HR and leadership and then passed forward to Carlson Detman to evaluate and then to put into their formula through a, a point score system, which is kind of kept behind the curtain on their end. Is that, is that what you were trying to arrive at on how, on who's working at it and how the information's getting to the study?
So who's going to work on all this as far as setting up payment for different classes, whatever you want to call them?
So the, the framework on a schedule is put together through Carlson Detman. And as they kind of showed you there, we have right now a recommendation on like an 11-step type of a process. But engaging what is coming back and what those numbers look like, I'm working with, heavily with Nicola and with Chad. And we'll be bringing in our department heads on a couple of different questions as well to figure out if it's going to work for us and if it's those other elements of is, you know, how is it, are we going to financially be able to implement this and to sustain this? And when we get at a solution of we think this is going to work for us to not fix all of our problems, but to improve our position to recruit and retain. And on top of that, we think that financially we can sustain this type of a program with this type of a progression and a policy to come around that wage schedule. Then we'll, we'll bring it forward for a information and discussion and hopefully on to action after input from you folks.
You know what? I go back to that problem. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
For example, the police, they have a union, correct? The police have a union.
The debt, the deputies, officers, yep, yep.
Come with wage decisions.
So they're, they're still on a collective.
City of Platteville does not have a union.
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
Represents.
Our officers.
Officers.
Yeah.
In the police department.
Yep.
And you're right, there is no union of other workers in the city.
And, and then what did, what do you call it? Act 10, that took away even collective bargaining.
Correct. Others, other than law enforcement officers, everyone else could participate if they wanted to yet in base wage bargaining. Ours dissolved.
The city, the, the workers in, in the city here got kind of thrown out there with nobody to really back them. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Todd, you had a question?
Again, with the problem-solving issue, not understanding. Again, with the problem solving issue, not understanding the past problems that brought us here. Now, first of all, my, my belief is that. The workers ought to be paid immediately. What they should be receiving and they should have received back pay. For this kind of clowning around we've had here the last decade. Um, but ultimately without understanding past problems and how we've gotten here. I don't know how you're gonna prevent yourself from getting in the same. Position in six to ten years. We're gonna be back here again and our taxes keep doing this. When it'd be nice to see a more gradual incline. And if that was decisions made by people sitting up here. Then I, I think, uh, once again, it backs this, this thought that perhaps we need to have more changeover of people up here. Every three to six years. So we have some different minds thinking about what's going on up here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Was there any other questions that, um, that you had for Matt? Otherwise I'd like to transition into a few thoughts.
Kathy?
Um, not really a question of, of Matt, but procedure. So this is. A presentation. Are we, is it going to be brought back for? Is the council gonna be accept, expected to accept this study, not? Implement it. Do we formally accept this study?
So the, the point and premise tonight is the, to educate you folks kind of in a big picture on how the process works and what the goals are. And again, what some of the preliminary feedback is on it. Is it boiled down into how does this rubber hit the road and what's it going to cost and what's it gonna look like? That's what we're gonna be asking you to take a vote on. I don't know if it's necessary on. Necessarily accepting. Study elements so much as this is the schedule and the, the policy that we wanna put in place as a result of it. Okay.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Matt. And I guess we're gonna transition to you now, Clint.
If I couldn't, I'll grab the. It's, so I think Jody's gonna pull up. I had a couple more slides here that I. Wanted to share tonight. Safe travels, Matt. Okay. Um, so as we just heard, we heard kind of the bigger pieces on data. And some preliminaries on some of the financials and what our trends are in those things, but. I wanted to kind of bring it back home here on how it's gonna have some of the most significant impacts inside the walls of the organization. And talk about, um, essentially how it's gonna impact some of our employees. I would have never guessed that in the same night you would get a double dose of kind of some of the Maslow, uh, um. Philosophies here, but there's many different philosophies on Maslow that kind of go into employments and they're kind of based on the same type of an understanding of. Establishing what is a base level for recruitment or retention and kind of then or what are some of the higher needs here? In the Langrick model of employee retention trademarked, uh, Chad and I will someday publish here. This is kind of how your city manager views the world of recruitment and retention. So imagine the bottom. Of your pyramid here is established at compensation. And in view of the, uh, employee wages and benefits offered on the position are acceptable in exchange for labor. It supports acceptable standard of living for the employee and the family, and it provides acceptable monetary value and social comparison, which we'll touch on. So. And to me, that kind of arrives at establishing a level of contentment. So if somebody comes and says. You know, our employees aren't really happy. Well, to me, that's kind of up at the top and we'll get there. I'm really trying to first establish, are we content here? Uh, for our wages. The second level there is kind of satisfaction. Are they satisfied? And to me, that kind of a, arrives at through a work environment, professional, supportive, provides purpose mastery, autonomy, appreciation. Establishes expectations as constructive communicate, uh, communication and opportunity. So to me, if we can establish an environment like that, hopefully we can have an employees that are in fact satisfied. To reach happy, uh, and this is my opinion again, happiness is a psychological state. It is neurological functions. The ability to regulate hormones. It depends on relative experiences. Anatomy, health, social and cultural norms and all those types of things. And, uh, to reach that, in my opinion, is, uh, a bit of a challenge, especially. When it's a deploy impendent and a good part of our deal here and leadership and management is in fact pushing. Employees and such into situations where it could be stressful and directly impacts that happiness type of a vibe. So. As you go up in this, obviously you're probably at a higher level of retention and as you go down, you're at a lower level of retention. Uh, at a compensation level, I feel that's really at an administrative type of discussion that we're having here. That's establishing that base wage on can our employees? Pay for their, their families to live in the community. At a work environment level, that's really that management and that culture that's put together. And again, at a higher psychological state of happiness. Really comes down to the employee's mindset. And again, this is my opinion. Different tools that kind of go in and establishing that, uh, that positive culture or, you know, reaching that satisfied state is establishing roles, authorities. Establish procedures for expressing and addressing concerns, support the chain of command, uh, complain up the chain of command, not down to colleagues. And then looking also at promote, uh, uh, to promote purpose mastery autonomy, to appreciate contributions. To support professional development, performance reviews so that folks know where they're standing. As you can kind of see there, things that are in the green are kind of that realm of what we establish with policy. And in the red is kind of that performance review, uh, type of a process that, um, we have and we can still, uh, improve upon. When it comes also to my, uh, philosophy on how a compensation plan kind of all fits together in that retention and recruitment, I kind of see skills. Knowledge and abilities is really what you're, for the most part, you're compensating or you're offering wages to. In longevity, uh, recognizing with benefit time off. Now, it kind of gets blurred when you're in a step type of a system because you're. Recruiting folks in a range and a spectrum of their career. Sometimes you're. Giving somebody that might have a high ceiling but has low experience and they might be starting down here and other times you are trying to recruit somebody that's in mid-career. And comes to you with a lot of experience. Uh, but for the most part, that's kind of been my philosophy and mad, um, in moving through public sector. Um, also in looking how we compare, as you heard in the study, there was lots of different comparables, um, that we look at. And then also I have the, the saying of, we can afford good employees, but we can't afford irreplaceable employees. So if we're structured to such a point where. Any one of us is, has an irreplaceable skillset because somebody else doesn't know it or something else is going on. Uh, that makes for challenging business because, can you can, you can pay for good employees, but irreplaceable ones. Uh, certainly becomes a challenge. So transitioning now, going into a wage study, um, it's more than certainly compensations. It's going to be some factors on social comparison. If this video works here and we get audio. Um, love to play it here. We'll see if it goes. This is a study. Oh, can you play it there? All right, here it comes. And so this is a study on social comparison, um, as it'll be described here. It's, um. Deals with some of our cousin primates. And it really kind of focuses on that, you know, we all think that we're rational consumers and we're focused on dollars. Uh, but really when we're. Looking at our neighbors or sister and brother or somebody across the street, be quickly put everything in perspective of relation to other folks.
So final experiment that I wanna mention to you is our fairness study. Uh, and so this, the, the, this became a very famous study and there's now many more because after we did this about ten years ago. Uh, it became very well known. And we did that originally with capuchin monkeys and, uh, I'm gonna show you the first experiment that we did. It has now been done with dogs and with birds. And with chimpanzees. Um, this, but with Sarah Blossom, we started out with capuchin monkeys. So what we did is we put two capuchin monkeys side by side. Again, these animals, they live in a group. They know each other. We take them out of the group, put them in a test chamber. And there's a very simple task that they need to do. And if you give both of them cucumber. For the task, the two monkeys side by side, they're perfectly willing to do this twenty-five times in a row. So cucumber, even though it's. Really only water in my opinion, but cucumber is perfectly fine for them. Now, if you give the partner grapes, the, the food preferences of my capuchin monkeys correspond exactly with the prices in the supermarket. And so if you give them grapes, it's a far better food, uh, then you create inequity between them. So that's the experiment we did. Recently we videotaped it with new monkeys who had never done the task, is thinking that maybe they would have a stronger reaction and that turned out to be right. The one on the left is the monkey who gets cucumber. The one on the right is the one who gets grapes. The one who gets cucumber, note that the first piece of cucumber is perfectly fine. The first piece he eats. Uh, then she sees the other one getting grape and you will see what happens. So she gives a rock to us, that's the task. And we give her a piece of cucumber and she eats it. The other one needs to give a rock to us. And that's what she does. And she gets a grape. And she eats it. The other one sees that. She gives a rock to us now, gets again cucumber. She tests a rock now against the wall. She needs to give it to us. And she gets cucumber again. So this is basically the Wall Street protest that you see here.
I think I've got two monkeys. The monkeys perform a task. They simply have to grab a rock from this end of the cage and hand it back to the. Uh, to the attendant and then they get a piece of cucumber. Well, that all goes well until one monkey gets a grape instead of a cucumber. And then. The monkey that looks over and realizes that they're doing the same thing, but one got a grape. Or, you know, my buddy got a grape and I got a cucumber, becomes passionately. Uh, discontent with the, 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 the level there. So we, we broke the level of content. We went from right off from happiness through satisfied. Right through the floor on content and you have a mad monkey on your hands and. It's a kind of put out there as a point of levity. It's not to say that, you know, to discredit concerns because they're very real. And they can have very, uh, huge impacts on your organization. Oh, is it, uh, is that you or is that me? Okay. Um, no. Oh, oh, nope. There we go. I got it. Okay. And so the other things that you have to consider now when we do this is we're going to have some significant social impacts. You're gonna be dealing with per, personal compensation, which is how a way. Of folks are taking care of their family. It's how you self-identify. It's how you compare with your workers and other folks in the community. And you could also be dealing with reprisal punishment. And essentially that's kind of if I don't get what I want. I'm gonna kind of be upset about it. And in, you know, the, the benefit of this perhaps is if I'm upset with Barb with the thing that she said. That will resonate with her and in the future she may not do the same thing so that we cooperate and I possibly get what I want in the future. All very basic. The three main challenges with that, as we just talked about, is that your social comparison often is gonna outweigh rational consumer. The idea of, hey, good news, we're gonna be getting some type of an increase next year can quickly be replaced by Sally's getting more than me. And that's not fair. The other challenge that you're gonna see through a study like this that you're well aware of is it's that subjective opinion, uh, when we're looking at different. Pay grades and different positions and all these different things. What might look like an apple apples comparison to someone could certainly be apples or oranges or cucumbers to grapes. Challenge three is there are countless ways, uh, and opportunities for somebody impacted by this study to feel like they're devalued. Through the process. It's not fair when you compare it to another employee in the department. It's not fair when you compare it to another employee in a different department. Another employee in a pay grade above me or below me or in the same grade, uh, to a different position that's comparable down at the university. How I contribute to the city, how much harder I work than others, where I was on the old schedule, how another employee's department head went to bat for them. And mine didn't, perhaps through a JDQ network as perceived. Another employee with a similar title, what step I was placed on my longevity. And it's often common to hear, nobody understands my position and how it contributes to the city. And these things are not, again, set in jest because they all might have some type of a merit to them. It's just that, again, it all kind of comes down the lens of everybody's gonna have an objective view on the process. So with that, then it also comes the, the, the mindset that it gets a little oversimplified. And when the schedule comes out, everybody thinks that they might have a simple fix. You move this position up here and that should solve it, or these two get switched, or this one moves down. And the reality is, is that as soon as you do that, it becomes a domino type of a thing. And again, everybody's gonna have a perspective. I've. Yet to see a schedule roll out where everybody agrees and said, wow, that looks good. Let's, it's, it's gonna be some social comparisons and some other variables that are gonna make that a challenge. So again, what's the whole, you know, the whole point of this is really trying to arrive at, how do you value work of employees? Uh, and through a classification, it's, it's how is our work of a clerical position more valuable than a maintenance worker than dispatcher, a librarian? A snowplow operator. From a dollar point is we're operating and turning dollars into services and not necessarily operating to gain profits back into the organization. The question is, how do you assign intrinsic value to services outside production, sales, manufacturing or other market service jobs? And. The only answer that I've arrived at is through a market study like this. It's, it's based on trying to. Gauge that supply and the willingness of the demand based on the credentials and the works and the fundings that you have. You make attempts to compare to a market through different benchmarking as we're going through. And the, you know, the bottom line is it really comes down to that at-will employee, that what is the balance on that recruitment and that retention? And as we kind of build and roll this out, we'll, uh, hopefully also be able to educate folks on where we stand in comparison with the neighbors and. Uh, comparison to national data and to be able to. Make a, uh, a recommendation to you folks that's going to try to. Again, try to satisfy some of those elements, knowing that we're not gonna arrive at a perfect solution in the eye of everybody's. Uh, eyes, but it hopefully a product that is going to be seen as an improvement. And statistically helps us with our recruitment and our retention, Madam President.
Okay, questions of Clint or comments? Okay, questions or comments? So, so are you basically telling us no one's gonna be happy?
Uh, no, there're gonna be some that are gonna be happy, but I, I would go so far as it's going to be impossible for everybody to. Be happy. Um, we're hoping to reach maybe some satisfied and again, in a good majority at content.
And, um. Because this is end of September. Is. This new. Policy or not policy.
New schedule. It would be.
Next month when we work on the budget?
Yes, it's going to be intended to be rolled out in conjunction with arriving at a twenty twenty-four budget.
That's, that's why it was timed this way, I think.
No, it's not. And, and we're well into it. We've got.
Back to Todd's question, how do we? This is going to keep us or get us back. Uh, normal levels so that five years down the road. I mean, I'm, I'm. Kind of thinking, okay, in, in a month, we would be able to have. The information, we're dealing with the budget and hoping that we're approving. Process that's going to work. That's just my.
I guess an old adage, you know, stop the bleeding first. Work on the repair. Cause right now we're, we're behind the eight ball substantially. By years.
It's, it's, you, the expectation is this step. Program. I mean, process, right? I mean.
To try to make up as Matt.
Everything.
Is Matt had said, well, fixing everything again kind of comes into the. The eye of the beholder on when things roll out and that thing, but trying to, uh, approach some of the points that Matt had brought out tonight, saying like. Market wise, we appear to be anywhere from ten to seventeen percent behind. To come up and recommend, hey, we're going to try to move. Everything of, uh, in our wage packet or, or, or total compensation, ten to seventeen. I don't think that that's where I'm gonna be coming to you folks in the next week and saying, I think this is the recommendation now. Again, putting a process in place to try to incrementally get that, it feels much more appropriate. Cause on top of it too, not even trying to meet, you know, that, that financial benchmarks too is, um. Can we cost it in the future? Cause all those, those increases that we're going to do, we do have. Some opportunities again, like through a supplemental aid package that is coming to us, uh, supplemental revenues. It's. Trying to fix that, but trying to again, do it in a, a balanced approach that we think it's going to be sustainable. So that we get into a, a, a pattern that does look like this and not. Hey, we we've arrived at something, we can do something this year, but now we over kind of shot on what we can do and now we're dropping and. Back up and down, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question? Am I dancing around a cat?
No, it does. It just seems like a lot within.
I think unfortunately, you know, a few years ago, people made decisions that led us to this financial. Place inflation and I'm talking about with the country. You know, and 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 taking care of this is going to be painful. It's going to be difficult. It's not going to be cheap. And uh, perhaps then within that we'll learn over the next uh three to six years not to make the same mistakes and cause ourselves this hyperinflation. So here we are. It's this is. This is what people chose a few years ago and have followed through with. So. Um, you know, that's where I quit feeling bad about it.
I just want my relatively short time experience. I first came on the console. We approved a budget. And the former. Manager, I believe. Two time after the budget was passed came because he want there was a. Request for an adjustment in a pay scale. We had, I'm. On the budget and it was sort of like. Okay, that maybe wasn't thought out real well. That. That's part of. My history of what has happened. And I just hope that. This new step process. Will alleviate that. So once we have a budget at least. Next year, we're not going to have to adjust. A certain employees. Pay.
I can't make a promise or comment on that situation. I that the intent is to try to meet that benchmark into what the market was at the same time. Any given recruitment uh type of an effort, if. You know, if we're unable to land a candidate and we, you know, we think we need to maintain those types of criterias for that type of position, then. An option is to come back and adjust those types of things. So there there are situations where unfortunately you do put a policy in place and you do have to make immediate adjustments to it like. I want to say like parking downtown because that's not. Kind of hit some hit some sensitive spots, but like parking downtown for an example. So uh, it it certainly might need adjustments.
I think I think Matt um shared that there are positions. Um. Across our country that are demanding higher wages now than they ever have and in comparison to other positions. Have some positions have grown. Subs in wage substantially more than other positions. And. When even if you do a study like this on a regular basis and seven years, it was seven years ago, is that six years ago? And we have a schedule, but with the kind of inflation we have. And and with the kind of cost controls we were under, I mean, we were. Yeah.
I guess I'm just interested.
Well, I'm interested in the positions that have the most wage compression, how we got there. I'm talking about wage compression, not inflation. Inflation, we can see it's very apparent over the last couple of years, the last two or three years, how bad it can be. But I'm talking about wage compression that was in existence prior to that and not making those same mistakes again with some of these positions.
I I can't uh. Can't comment on that because I don't know how many. Compression issues we have, although I would assume that with some of our senior employees, we have significant compression issues.
Fair to say and and how we arrive at some of them again, is a combination of whether it's inflationary factors. Uh, market challenges, market strains and shortages, or the fact that on some of our positions to the expectations certainly continue to grow. We begin adding more and more expectations to those positions that can contribute to it as well. So it's.
And I don't want to waste your time with that either. I'm not asking for a big waste of time in terms of looking back. Um, we must look forward, I guess, and try to make sure we don't make the same mistakes, I guess. Waste our time. Thank you, though, for your time. I do want to see that monkey video. That's got to be pretty funny. Very, very tell.
Okay, so our next meeting. Before we adjourn this meeting, because we have one item of business and that's to adjourn. But our next meeting is just a week from today. It would be on October 2nd. That night we will be meeting in or October. Yeah, this is just driving me crazy. Having the month start on a Sunday as the first, I just don't, it's just not right. I just keep.
I think we can do it. We can do an ordinance or a resolution, I think maybe.
Right, let's have a resolution about that. So it's the third, it's Tuesday. And we'll meet at six o'clock. Is that what we're scheduled for?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock and we will be in the police conference room.
Yes.
Yes.
And this will be primarily a budget meeting. It will uh be about the uh capital improvement. Budget, we've all all seen the plan. And so now we'll see what from the plan we can actually fund in a budget. It's likely that we'll see some financial projections and financial plans from Lers. As it relates to the capital improvement plan and perhaps even the fire station. Is that correct?
So the the context is to roll out the financial plan. Picture that looks like this. And then we start kind of incorporating then CIP. We start incorporating conversations of what wages look like and. Fire facility kind of gets built in there as well. And then we come back and then with a preliminary on this is what we're expecting for a budget. To 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 pay for all these things and then start going through then one at a time on action on. Yes, we want to do this for a CIP. Yes, we want to do this with wages. And then finally, yes, we want to do this with a budget to pay for those. Did I explain that correctly, Nicola?
Yes, and I would also um add that because Ellis is helping us with the promissory notes that was part of the 2023 CIP budget. And since they're going to be here anyway, um, for the financial management plan, then there will also be an action item. To approve uh the promissory note. Uh, we we went out to banks. Um, and and got proposals and so they'll be bringing that forward for action on next Tuesday.
Tuesday, the third. Okay, so um. Jody, do you have your hand raised? That will be up to. Uh, staff. Did you ask for the, who asked for the meeting to be recorded?
That she had a request. For it to be recorded? If she did, she very well could have. I don't recall, but I guess, yes, I mean, yeah.
Well, we'll get that sorted out. We'll get that sorted out, but we won't sort it out tonight. That's a great thing. Thank you for bringing that up.
I guess for for convenience sake, I'm trying to accommodate for that. Are we okay with meeting back in here for?
We would have to. If we're going to record, we would have to meet in here.
Okay.
Right. I guess it is because it's been requested that we record it. Unless we find out that.
Yeah, that would be a challenge. So if we've got the system here and uh. We'll do it here.
Right.
Comment or question? Are you talking about wages and so forth? Where do you expect to get the money from? Because the state is very slow. About funding. We had, we had started out with seven billion dollars.
It's my understa- so the the funding is going to come from a combination of. Our levy as it has historically and revenues of which we're working into the budget as well. And then there is the additional revenue share that we're anticipating to come in 2024 and they have given us a date on when those are going to be released. I believe it's coming in the July and November. Uh, releases with the standard. Uh, shared revenue uh releases is what we understand right now.
But to me, I see that. The state per se is not giving us very much. When you look at both sides, Republican, Democrat. We got this opposite.
Certainly be in favor of more, but more would always be nice.
To get enough money for wage increases and so forth. And for carrying out CIP.
I guess that's what we're going to learn about and talk about next week on Tuesday, the third of October. And I would remind everybody that they should have reserved every Tuesday. In October for meetings because we will have this CIP budget meeting, then we will have a regular meeting. Then we will have a. General budget meeting, I think, and then. Uh. A regular meeting and then I think the fifth Tuesday, if there is a, is uh if we need a meeting.
Correct.
The fifth Tuesday is Halloween then is what we're talking about.
That could be, it is.
Okay.
I I will say that over the past.
That's an if we have to have one.
We have not needed that extra meeting for many years. Um, so.
So we're hopeful that we won't, Todd, but we just, I just say.
Think that we could get through it with the four four meetings.
Reserve every meeting, every Tuesday and in October.
Thank you. I I got a motion.
Good.
Let's uh call it a night. My motion. Adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to call it a night. Candace will vote.
Killian.
Yeah.
Dos.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Casper.
Of course.
Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries.